Welcome, everyone, to the September 13th committee of the whole meeting. Call to order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Deroff. Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Mrs. Hogan. Ms. Nyman. Mr. Panarello. Mr. Updugrove. Mr. Zawada. Mrs. Scott. Mr. Brophy. All present.
There I went on, I'm on now.
They are now.
Up there now.
Could we all stand for the pledge allegiance followed by a moment of silence? Okay, we had a previous executive session. It was for two hours and with regards to personnel. Up next for discussion and information. I'm excited to hear our welcome from the Gilbertsville Elementary School and thank you for having us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here at Gilbertsville Elementary School today. My name is Mrs. Stephanie Petrie and I am the building principal here. And I am very excited to be able to share some information that we've been doing for the first month of school. It's been a busy first month of school. I have four students with me here this evening and they have been outstanding leaders, actually starting in the summer. So these four students gave up some summertime to help with new student tours, kindergarten orientation, our first grade orientation, and then volunteered to help with our kindergartners and first graders the first few weeks of school, helping them find the right bus, get on the right bus, get off the right bus, find their classrooms. And they just really have been a tremendous group and really have started off our school year in a very positive way, being very strong leaders and leading by example. So I'm very grateful for their help this year and I'm thrilled that they have an opportunity to share some of the highlights of our school year.
Hi, my name is Dominic and I'm in Mr. Kobach's fifth grade class. September is a busy month at Gilbertsville. Yesterday, we participated in activities for a day to remember, otherwise known as Patriots' Day. Boyertown Area School District has a resolution declaring that the district is fully committed to ensuring our freedoms remain in place, that rooting the world of hateful acts is of special importance to the district, and that we pledge never to forget those who died on September 11th. At Gilbertsville, we have traditions established for Patriots' Day. Our students and staff are encouraged to wear red, white, and blue. Our scouts wear the scouting uniforms, lead the pledge of allegiance, and participate in the morning announcements with Mrs. Petrie by reciting a special reading.
Hi, my name is Natalie. I am in Mrs. Anstrom's fifth grade class. September is also a childhood cancer awareness month for Boyertown Area School District. Another one of our resolutions states that our school board, administrators, and staff strongly believe that it's required to share the needs of children and adolescents living through and beyond cancer and seeks to raise community awareness of pediatric and adolescents' cancer. Here at Gilbertsville, we share the story "How Do You Care for a Very Sick Bear?" written by Vanessa Bayer and illustrated by Roseanne Futchu. The author is a cancer survivor and the book gently describes different things that might happen to a sick bear. Your friend might look different, she might have less hair, she might be too tired to play. Then it goes into what we can do as friends to help, such as bringing them cards, playing games, or simply being there for them. On Friday, our students and staff will be part of our annual district-wide Gold Out to raise funds and awareness for childhood cancer in addition to wearing our golden vest to school. The Gold Out will continue through Friday night's home football game. Go Bears!
Hi, my name is Sage and I'm in Mr. Kobach's fifth grade class. In addition to raising childhood cancer awareness, the students and staff at GES are very service-oriented in other ways. Mrs. Rothermell leads our fifth grade student advisory team. This student-run club organizes, advertises, and manages our community service projects. This year, two projects are planned. The first is a gently-used book drive that is happening now for the students in Kentucky whose books were damaged in the recent flooding. The second project is our annual drive for Preston's pantry at Boyertown Multi-Service. Our drive is held in January after the holidays at a time when donations are slow, but the need can be greater due to the winter months. This project brings out the very best in our GES community and we are proud of this growing tradition. Not only are our students participating in community service, but our staff is also. This is just a sampling of the organizations served by our Gilbertsville educational team. Berks County Dairy Beef Club leader, Berks County Youth Aid Panel leader, volunteer, Friendship Hook and Ladder Fire Company Social Quarters leader, New Hanover Lutheran Church Meal Delivery volunteer, Ole Valley Youth League, Ole Valley Community Education Foundation, Project Libertad, helping newcomer immigrant youth volunteer reading a limex code.
Hello, my name is David Peters and I am in Capitol Fifth Grade Class. Saturday, September 17th is Constitution Day. Most of our elementary schools are honoring the day on Friday, the 16th. On September 17th, 1787, is the delegates to the Constitutional Convention met for the last time to sign the document they had created. Here at GES, we observe this important day in our national history by reading stories like "The Flag We Love," "We the Kids, We the People," and "The Running of the Constitution." Some classrooms write their own constitutions and view the Schoolhouse Rock video, the preamble, and there is a sentence starter activity that begins with "If I wrote the Constitution," and a Constitution poem that not only teaches us about the Constitution, but also allows us to practice reading fluency and demonstrate rhythm. Before we end our presentation, I would like to tell you about one final activity here at GES. Throughout August and September, we are learning about our Unity Expectations. When you travel throughout our main lobby, you will see a Unity Display. U is for use kind words and actions. N is for need to give hands, feet, and objects to ourselves. I is for I will follow for directions the first time given. T is for take ownership of our actions and learning. Y is for yields, yield and walk silently throughout our hallway. Each time you are caught in the act of following the Unity Expectations, we receive a ticket. We can choose to have our ticket displayed in the lobby display, enter to win a prize, or take them home probably and put it on display there. This project brings us together with a common Constitution language and school rules, giving us a chance to shine as individuals and a school. Thank you for coming to GES Elementary School and thank you and for letting us share our incredible month of September with all of you.
I just need to thank my four friends that joined us tonight with myself and Mrs. Rothermell. It takes a lot of courage to come in front of a lot of adults and have an audience behind you, and I'm really proud of them and their contributions to our school this year. They really are a tremendous group. So thank you guys for coming out tonight. I did tell them they may leave after this, so they do not need to stay for the meeting, but they are excused and I will see you in the morning. Oh, sure.
How are you enjoying school? Better have a thumbs up sign. You've got the rest of the year to go.
Okay, it's back. Not so much a question, but just a comment. Thank you. Mrs. Petrie is right, it takes a lot of courage to get up in front of adults and be willing to speak, so I appreciate it and thank you, and have a great school year.
There we go. I just want to say great job, guys. Ms. Petrie, thank you for having us. And as she said, "Go Bears!"
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Okay, next we have a transportation presentation from Mr. Stout. Mr. Stout?
I'll keep making sure the red light is on for the presentation, so, next slide. We wanted to provide an update for transportation for the start of the school year. I know there have been some challenges and some struggles for our community and transportation, and it was imperative for us to communicate out to our community about what we're doing right now, the status of our current transportation situation, as well as some futuristic corrective actions that we've learned this year to help support us for future transportation needs. I feel like there's an echo. I'm going to pull this away a little bit. So just to give a quick update, we have had a retirement of our BASD Transportation Coordinator of many years. I think it's 10-plus years that Steve Missimer was here and really knew every nook and cranny throughout the district. In transition from Mr. Missimer's retirement, we went through a couple supports to try to move forward and ultimately landed in a collaboration with Quigley Bus Service to take on the responsibilities of the routing systems and take on the responsibilities to provide all of our bus services for the Boyertown Area School District. In the midst of this, as everybody knows, we hit a pandemic and we certainly had unique transportation needs during this pandemic. For those of you that remember, we ran A/B schedules for a while. We were in on certain days, off on certain days, and never had an opportunity to really capitalize on setting up a true transportation program for a start of a school year. This truly, at the start of the 22-23 school year, is the first year that Quigley has planned and implemented our BASD transportation services, and I think that's imperative to realize. To not get in the weeds too much about this slide, I'll give a brief overview, but we have two significant software platforms within our district. We have Infinite Campus, which I think all of our community members are familiar with. That's our data warehousing system for our students. Scheduling is in there, bus information is in there, all of the demographic information for our families. But what our families do not realize is that we have another software platform called TransFinder. TransFinder communicates with Infinite Campus, and when we update our information within Infinite Campus, it speaks to TransFinder, and TransFinder geocodes a family within our community and then ultimately potentially pins a student within a routing platform to provide transportation services. So if we think about it, they need to speak to one another and they need to speak to one another clearly, because if data is not clean going in from one software platform to the other, it can create issues. So if you go to the fourth bullet on this slide, it is absolutely critical for data collected within our Infinite Campus platform to be clean so that it provides accurate data to TransFinder. Any minor error could cause a route conflict within the system. And we learned a lot about that this year to make sure that data is clean. So I can't emphasize enough to our community that the timing of new registrations for both BASD students as well as our non-pub students is very critical, because it can cause a delay in creating a route. And most importantly, the second-last bullet, is the importance of our parents need to make sure that they are completing their annual verification information to ensure that we have accurate data within the system. We are also going to be working on, sometime during the course of this year, working on updating our TransFinder software, because we had not done that in the past, and I'm going to say something that's going to sound a little silly, but we have so many new communities within our residency, we are literally looking at bus routes that are cornfields, because we don't have updated maps in our system. So we are going to be looking to update that software this year, which is part of our evolution of moving forward. The update continued. Late registrations for our Boyertown Area School District, we had a lot of students returning to our district this year, so it made greater numbers, and I'm going to give you specific information shortly. But I will tell you that I have been helping to support transportation and trying to help get all of our students on buses, but there was one critical error that had taken place that I think everyone needs to realize is out there, and it has really caused a significant delay with respect to our routing platform. And that is of this year's sixth graders and this year's ninth graders. For all of our students that were in grades in elementary school, second to third grade, fourth to fifth grade, seventh to eighth grade, 10th to 11th grade, typically the routes that were created within TransFinder exist and they were easy to roll over to our new school year. But grade six, which was actually grade five last year, rolled up to grade six. They're attending a middle school. Different schedule, different route system. Same with our eighth graders rolled up to ninth grade. So I will point-blank share with the board and the community that sixth and ninth grade, the majority of our students to start the school year did not have bus routes. And that is something we learned very late, before the start of the school year, and it caused a lot of chaos in our routing system, because each one of those students had to be manually done individually to create a route. And as I shared with you before, you have to create a specific area where the bus stops and then you have to pin a student in that particular area to create a bus route for that particular person or family. When we finally sorted through our sixth and ninth graders and we prioritized a lot of those routes, we sent a survey out to approximately 275 students who did not have transportation posted in Infinite Campus. I'll remind you again that once TransFinder has a route that's created within the system, every odd hour on the 45th minute, it talks back to Infinite Campus and populates the transportation tab that families have access to see their information. So many families in the community saw emails go out that said, "Hopefully, tonight, your information will be updated." And I can say with a smile that anyone we put into TransFinder did seem to roll back over to Infinite Campus for families to see that information. So of those 275 students that we set a survey out to see who did not have transportation posted in Infinite Campus, approximately 100 or so students still did not have transportation as of the end of last week, and we are working through each one of those students to geocode them, which means we need to put them on a map, and then we have to pin them to make sure that we create a route that is now a new route for the student. Here are some numbers to give the board and the community an update on what we have within our Boyertown Area School District as far as numbers. Our day eight enrollment, and by the way, we're past day 12, so I did not have the new information to update, but we have 6,627 students in our system, in our Boyertown Area School District this year. Here is some very compelling information to look at. Of the 6,627 students, new registrations, these are individual students within our school district, we had 721 new registrations in our district this year. 165 of those actual student registrations registered in the month of August. So I go back to a slide, a few slides ago, and you don't have to go back there, in talking about the importance for our community members to stay in tune to the start of the school year, have their information updated as accurately as possible, and making sure that we can get on top of our new registrations. So all of those, if every one of those 721 students needed a bus route, it's a lot of work that needs to go into the system. As we have created presentations in the past and talked about students that are not served within the Boyertown Area School District parameters, some of our students are served outside of the Boyertown Area School District, and we call those alternative education students or alternative education sites. We have approximately 98 students that are outside of the Boyertown Area School District parameters that require transportation. Our non-public students, and this was another surprise that I don't know if everyone understood, for a non-public student that goes to a non-public school within 10 miles of the Boyertown Area School District, we provide transportation for all of those students. We currently have 490 students that are attending a non-public, could be a parochial school or an outside Boyertown Area School District school. Homeless students is another group of students that we are required to provide transportation to. Oftentimes, we try to collaborate with the district that a homeless student could temporarily be residing in to help. They might grab one half of the route and we might grab the other half of the route, but these are unpredictable students, and we support them the best that we can to get them to and from school, and they could happen at any moment that we don't know to predict what a homeless student will be. Actual bus routes that we have within our system right now, Quigley Bus Service runs approximately 73 runs. Because, as many of you know, that some of our bus runs run double runs, we have approximately 10 combined runs that buses literally leave a building, take kids to their community where they reside, and return to the building and do another run. And we try to be as efficient and effective in doing those particular combined runs. For the actual van routes that we have within the district, and as we talk about, as an example, some of our special education students attend buildings where specialized programs are, like autistic support, life skill support, emotional support, we have approximately 55 van runs throughout the district. Future focus, and I think this is a critical slide as we move forward. I know it's been a difficult time for many of our family members to get their students, their children, on buses. We're working diligently to do that, but I am incredibly optimistic that what we have learned during the course of this school year is going to really help us to create a timeline of events to really plan for the 23-24 school year, and that's starting in October already. We're planning a meeting with Quigley Bus Services to create a specific template of timeline of events, and this is an example of what we will improve upon from what happened this past year. To not get in the weeds too much, but we roll our eighth-grade students over to ninth grade in Infinite Campus in January, and we do this for the purpose of scheduling at the high school. It's critical that our students have access to their schedules, or they don't personally have access, but our counselors and our administrators have access to have the students in Infinite Campus as ninth graders to start scheduling for that upcoming school year. So upon that rollover in January, Quigley Bus Service can start creating those 2023-2024 bus routes for that upcoming school year. We did not start that process until later in the summer this year, so that's going to help that situation a lot more effectively this year. Same with our fifth-grade students at the elementary school rolling over to sixth grade. We rolled them over approximately February, March, and at that particular time, not only can we create our schedules for our incoming sixth-grade middle school students, but we can also create our bus routes for those students at that particular time. The rest of the calendar of events here, and we will work on more specifics of what those processes look like as we move forward, but during the March to May timeframe, we plan for summer, because many of our students with unique needs attend our summer extended school year programs within our district, and we have approximately 60 routes of buses that we run over our summer to have our students attend our specialized programs. In May and June, we can't forget about our incoming kindergartners. We really don't know until our incoming kindergartners register how many true incoming kindergartners we will have, but we also have our kindergarten or non-pub routes start to begin to be created for our future 23-24 school year. And as of July 1st, all of our non-public education students have to complete an Act 372 form, which is an annual document that allows us to move forward with planning transportation for families. We will also work on, we have specific parameters and specific guidelines based upon deviation requests. Example, a family that might have 50/50 custody and depending on where they reside within the district. And at that particular time, we also will do the full rollover of all of our students in Infinite Campus, so all routes can be created. And I want to say it was approximately maybe August 12th of this past summer when we opened up the portal so families had access to see their routes for the upcoming school year. And finally, in August, we'll finalize all the routes for the 23-24 school year. So that is our future focus and our corrective actions that we want to work on to move forward with planning for the 23-24 school year. So at this time, if anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask. I also have, Mr. Quigley is in the audience today, that can help to answer any maybe technical questions about the bus service. Mr. Zawada?
How many bus drivers still are we short?
So, we're always hiring bus drivers. I would say, Mr. Stout said about the 10 combined routes, so you could have, you know, if we uncombine those routes, that would be 10. Most of the combined routes are working pretty well. I would say if we'd have six extra bus drivers a day, that would help tremendously. We have had good success with hiring van drivers over this past month. Surprisingly, from what we had seen, we're having a good flow of applications.
Yes. I know when I drove for you, Mr. Quigley, we never drove past a student that was standing out. Is that continuing?
That's our procedure. If we see a student that is standing out, we'll stop and question the student. Our directive to the drivers is, you know, if you have a Boyertown student or a non-public student, you know, always take them in.
Okay, thank you for that. I was sure that you were still doing that, but I wanted to make sure. Mr. Stout, you said about the sixth and ninth graders. However, most of those should have had bus stops already from previous years that would have been there, so why would we still be having issues with that?
They have bus routes, but they are a new timeframe system. So because their bus route now is potentially incorporated with, as Middle School West has different feeder elementary schools, as Middle School East also has different feeder elementary schools, these are brand-new routes that are created that encompass different students than would have typically had happened, and they are assigned different start times, different end times. One thing that we did find in the system, because some of our sixth and ninth graders did have transportation, and I'm just giving you a quick snapshot of what we believe why that was the case. If there was a sibling, you and I are brother and sister, and I'll say that I'm the older brother and you're the younger sister. So let's hypothetically say that you are in eighth grade and I am moving up to sixth grade. Because you already had a run that was created in the middle school and you're geocoded in the system, me coming up, because I'm a pin to the same family, I did have a route. But we know that that's not the majority of our students that have that ability to do that, but it really is because they are in a new environment, the system is set up that it has to create a new route.
Okay, and have we addressed all the unsafe issues of curves or whatever, that somebody would come flying around a turn and won't see a bus stop? would come flying around a turn and won't see a bus stop?
We have, we ask the drivers to report any situation like that, whether it be a bus driver or a van driver that, you know, has a blind spot. You know, it's especially important when the student's crossing the road, but, you know, the stops where the students are crossing have the sight distance. You might run into some shorter sight distance if the bus is stopping for the student getting on on the right side of the road, but for crossing, it's taken care of.
And if we're having any issues with somebody running the red lights, are we getting the police involved and getting that taken care of? Because if you're having issues with the police, we'll gladly, or I'll gladly, go after some of them.
We write the vehicles up as long as we get the license number and a description of the vehicle, and turn that in. We have to do that within 48 hours.
How many times has that been done this past year?
I would have to get back to you on that. I don't have that on the top of my head. As I said, we're doing pretty good on van drivers. I would say probably about five to eight, something like that would take care of the
That's all.
Mr. Stout, I wanted to... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking over here and I'm not looking there. I apologize. I went on the TransFinder website just out of curiosity of the software and everything. So which package, do you have the package, what they call the trifecta, which is the route finder and the, what is it called here? The stop finder, the route finder, and the way finder? Do you have that one? Is that the one that you have?
Yes, we do have that one.
Okay.
The issue with the current software is the maps have not been updated in many, many ways.
Yeah, I understand. I just was curious. So is that stop finder, is that going to be made available to parents at some point, or is it already?
We utilize a different system for that currently. Here comes the bus, which is not completely underminded.
Okay.
So that is another software program we're evaluating. Can we suit it better to be all in one program with TransFinder? And that will be evaluated as part of the overview of the update that we're implementing.
Okay, thank you.
I want to say too, Mrs. Scott and Mrs. Dennehy, I think that the other platform is web-based too, which I think creates a little more efficiency for us to run the program, because right now I think it's server-based, which creates, it's kind of like dial-up versus cable internet a little bit to try to get in the system.
Yeah, okay, thanks. So we definitely had a rough start this year, but I know that you both were working very hard, and I appreciate that, so, Mr. Quigley, please pass my appreciation on to your staff. I know it's been a tough start. And I'm really glad to see that we're focusing on the future and taking steps to ensure that it won't happen again. That's really great. Out of the about 100 students, how long do we think it'll be until they get routes?
Not sure what's up with the microphones tonight. Only one person can be read at a time, and maybe that's a good thing. That's a great question. The person that I've been kind of working and collaborating with is getting them in the system. The goal, and I know if I say this, it's going to backfire, the goal is by the weekend to have all of those students. Just an update to what transpired in that 100. I pulled the data from the survey that went out the Wednesday after the survey went out that, after the Tuesday. I pulled it again on Monday, and there was only about 24 families that responded, which is good, because we had 100. So what they worked on compared to what's there now, I don't have a definitive number, but when I spoke to them earlier, because I had a little crazy day today in my assistant superintendent role, and I did not get to collaborate as much as I would have liked, so I did not get an exact number, but when I spoke to them earlier, they thought by the weekend they should be able to get as many of them in as they can. But another critical piece of the element is that they manually put some of the families into the system, or I strike that, they manually tell bus drivers some of the stops so that we can get students on buses. It might take a little bit longer for that information to actually be physically put into TransFinder so that it can talk to IC, so families can see the update. So when Mrs. Moyer pushed out the communications over the past couple of weeks, we were very clear to make sure you could actually potentially have transportation set up and not see your information in IC, because you've been communicated with directly from transportation.
And then just one more question. So about the amount of students on high school buses and middle school buses where kids are larger, just take up more space, how are we handling that? Are we, like in the high school, is it two to a seat instead of three? How is that being handled so that we know the kids are safe?
The high school, middle school and high school, the middle school and high school buses are basically 48, that's two to a seat. There might be some that are three to the seat. Thing about that is, when you get towards the end of the route closer to the school, you get to the point where there's three to the seat, and when you dismiss, the three to the seat is left off first, and it gets it lessened as far as the capacity on the bus. Overall, we aren't seeing capacity problems. I mean, the elementary buses are loaded, but we're, you know, we're not seeing that we don't have the capacity to, you know, transport at the capacity of the bus.
One thing, Mrs. Hogan, that came up in conversation with someone I've been working with in the office who actually does runs as well, sometimes the older students have to be reminded to sit in the front of the bus, because they might not be as inclined to sit in the front of the bus because there's space. And again, we were all teenagers at one point as well, but the reminder had gone out to make sure that we utilize front to back as far as all the seats that are available.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I think that's important, that we are utilizing all the seats, of course, but when it comes to having three high schoolers across the seat, whether it's for a half a block or two miles, it's concerning to me just because those seats are really what create safety, since there's no seat belts from what I'm reading and understanding, that they're kind of like going to crash, they're the insulators, so I want to make sure that kids are safe. That's my main concern.
We are transporting from 6th to 12th grade, so I mean, you know, some of the 6th graders aren't, you know, as big as the high schoolers do, so.
Yeah, Quigley, one, thank you for these numbers. They make it a little more staggering. I understand that the parent that didn't get picked up, the numbers won't mean anything to them, but it brings into light the significant amount of students that we do have, and especially the other students that we have to supply transportation to. I know, Mr. Quigley, and you both have, Mr. Stout, I've been working your butts off, and myself as a school board director appreciate everything that you guys have done.
Anyone else?
I guess me. For one thing, we say, I like what I'm seeing here. For one thing, we're acknowledging we have a problem, which is always good, because it's been a known problem, and I think this year has been the best, right now, is your best push toward attacking it. I believe your timeframe to get in front of it is the proper way to go about it, and it appears that you've seen what some of your problems are. Your software is an issue, some of the data transfer is an issue, so those things have come up, so you're pointing them out and you're going with it to try and straighten it out, so we don't go through this again next year, which would be great for everybody, especially for you. So what kind of feedback loop are you going to put in here so that you know that this worked? I mean, so your list there from January on through is great to go forward with that, but how are you going to look back at yourselves next year to say, okay, all this worked, or we needed to change this? This didn't work as well as we thought it would be, or we still missed some routes and we think it's here? What's your plan on that?
So part of the software platform is the ability to run reports and to run reports for accuracy on routes for the amount of students that are actually geocoded and pinned versus the students that are in IC. Again, to be completely transparent, I did not involve myself in any of the conversations until there was an issue that was brought to the forefront this year. Not saying it in a critical way to any person, but, you know, you solve problems when they come about. I do feel bad about that, but I also feel that based upon my experiences and what have taken place, and knowing that timeline, that the proof will be in the amount of students that are pinned or routed, keep it into like a routing term, that are routed come next August when we click the button when parents have the open portal. That's the critical time when we say, okay, at this particular time, as all of our parents are very eager to see their student schedules, they're also eager to see their transportation information, and if we would have been able to take out the hundreds of students that weren't assigned in 6th and 9th grade, we'd be able to handle those individual cases, and I don't want to pretend to say that there aren't going to be issues, because if you go to any neighboring busing school community, there are significant issues happening all around, but I will say that I think we can minimize the opportunities for errors.
We're going to be continuing to look at that and try to continue to improve each and every year. The other part I like is that Quigley is now, you've moved all of the work over toward Quigley, and you're just going to oversee it, which I think that minimizes the handoffs and actually puts everything in one house, which I think is the right place for it to be.
Yeah, just to give you a quick example of that TransFinder system, if anyone in the board or in the community has put in a GPS coordinates in their car to go somewhere, and you think you go from Mr. Brophy, you know, myself to Mr. Brophy, that's how the route should go, but somehow the GPS takes you to Mrs. Scott, then takes you to Mrs. Nyman, and then takes you to Mr. Brophy for whatever reason, the TransFinder system can tend to do that, and the expertise that is in the Quigley Bus Service looks at that and says, you know what, that really should not be bus 12, as TransFinder suggests. It needs to be bus number 11, because bus number 11 is more of a direct route, and by the way, it's got less students on it. So there's all kinds of historical institutional knowledge that comes along with routing students on buses.
Sort of like when I do my GPS in my car. Correct.
Just one more comment, and I know this is not an excuse, but this is Quigley's first time with this. They have not done this before, so it's not an excuse, but I know Brian is working on it, and Chris, and I appreciate everything you're doing, and I'm sure every year you will learn from your past mistakes of this. So thank you for what you're doing and all the time you and Chris are putting into this.
Yeah, Mr. Quigley, what are you going to do to correct the problem of being short on bus drivers and van drivers?
Like I said, we're always recruiting drivers. We had a good response with van drivers by using Indeed. That, we had a good response, and we're just going to continue with the advertising, the yard signs, the social media, and it's just a constant, it's a constant turn, because the people that are driving the buses tend to be older, and you run into the issue of, you know, people get sick, people, you know, it's, their husbands get sick, it's just a constant, you have to keep up and just keep training and keep with it. It's just, we got with the pandemic and everything, and we got behind the eight ball as far as being able to keep up with the number of drivers we need, and I see us working through that. It's better than it had been. It's not great, but it is loosening up.
And just to make a point to that, I forget what the exact number of routes that were up there, I apologize, but even if it was fully 100% staffed, I am coordinating and looking at emails at about 5:30 in the morning from Mrs. Quigley about bus drivers that have called out sick. So even with 100% of a fully staffed busing company, they are making adjustments every single day, every single afternoon for bus drivers that are out, which you can plan for, but you really can't plan for because it's unpredictable.
Quigley, how many cameras are on the bus, and do we have any outside cameras? Because I would think if a car goes through our red lights, I think the driver probably is more impatient to try to save the child, but I know they've been getting rowdier, because they've been cooped up for two years. Do we have cameras on the bus, and is there anything that possibly we could put on the outside of the bus that would catch the people that are blowing these? And they've been doing it forever. It's not like this is a new thing. I mean, I've seen a number of people 25 years ago would pass a bus, and it's total stupidity, but now, I'm just, for the routiness to help the drivers, you know, is there any kind of cameras on the bus?
On the, we have two inside cameras on the vans, one facing back, the other in the back facing front. On the full-size buses, we have three inside cameras monitoring the driver and students, and we have one inside camera, it's a windshield camera that shoots out the front of the bus. We don't have stop bar and cameras, that's coming into its own, and that's something that would be able to catch the license number and so on and so forth of every vehicle that
Mr. Quigley, thank you very much. Mr. Stout, thank you for the presentation.
All right, Ms. Hogan has some information from the BCIU. You see, you're up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hemingway. So earlier today, I sent board members an email with three attachments. One was the what happened at the IU meeting on August 18th. If I read it all, we'd be here for four days, so I'm not going to. The other one was the Pennsylvania school code update. I have both of those printed out if anybody's interested in looking at them, and then the third was just the newsletter. Today, we had our COLA meeting, so our Committee on Legislative Action. Mrs. Torsho was there in person, I was virtual, so she got to be in the picture and I didn't, so whatever, but it's fine. So it's PASA that, yeah, that presented today, and I usually wouldn't take this long, so a little bit of an apology, but I think it's really important to share with you guys. So a lot of what they were talking about was advocacy and how important that is for board members to be advocating, and a lot of it had to do with funding. So a few things they talked about were the teacher crisis, and so in 2010 and 11, PA granted 21,045 new education certificates. In 1920, that number was down to 7,000. So when we're talking about crisis in education and staffing, we can see by the numbers, you know, that that's what it is, and it's not pandemic-related, because in the three years before the pandemic, PA granted an average of 7,350 education certificates per year. So it's pretty dire, and it's going to be a big problem upcoming, something we definitely want to keep an eye on. want to keep an eye on. And if anybody's interested, those numbers are from the Pittsburgh Tribune via the PDE. So you can check those or look them up. So another thing was funding. So even though we've had a historic education funding increase this year, huge increases, right, which is really something to celebrate, but the Commonwealth really needs to do better and needs to start paying its fair share. We were talking about mandated costs and how they're outpacing the state funding. So between 2010, between the 2010-11 school year and the 2021 school year, state funding grew by 2.8 billion, while state mandated costs grew by 6.5 billion. That's a huge difference there. And all of those monies then have to be made up in your local district. So it's a big, big deal, a big problem for us locally. The other thing was PA is 45th in the nation for state education spending, meaning the amount of money that the state allocates to local districts to support public education. So this puts a huge burden on our local taxpayers to fund education and including, again, going back to all those unfunded mandates. So there's 11 proposals that would divert money away from public schools in the forms of voucher and scholarship expansions. So that's happening, something for us to keep an eye on. And there was a lot of talk about how funding public education is really about supporting the common good, how, you know, public ed leads to a more healthy community, people that can pay taxes and are able to be productive in our communities. So it's something we really want to advocate to support. Again, I have it like in bold, the importance of the board in doing advocacy work for public education, so making sure you're speaking to your state reps and whatnot. And then some of the BCIU COLA priorities for the year, I just wanted to share them with you guys real quick. At the state level, they want to continue to advocate for school safety, both physical safety and mental health funding, advocate for basic and special ed funding, keep advocating about those state mandates, cyber charter reform. At the federal level, which we don't talk much about the federal level, but we're talking about special education funding. So I actually pulled this off of the National Center for Learning Disabilities website, and this is what it said. When Congress passed the IDEA, they promised to cover 40% of the extra cost of special education. In other words, they would pay for nearly half of the additional costs required to educate students with disabilities when compared to the cost per student without disabilities. Unfortunately, Congress has never come close to fulfilling that promise. The number of students with disabilities served under the IDEA has increased by 25% in the past two decades. Yet the IDEA state grant program was only funded at around 12 billion in 2017. The federal government is only covering 14.6% of the additional cost. So again, those are huge massive costs that get passed on to districts and then get passed on to local taxpayers. And then one of their watchlist items was an alternative to school property tax, which we know we've heard come up a few times. So I will get the slides in the next few days and I'll send them all out to you. I know that was a lot and I appreciate you listening. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Running through the BCTC, there was a, we had a meeting on August 24th at the Berks Career and Technology Center in Oley. I have meeting briefs that if any of you would like to see all the approvals that went through, a lot of them are fairly repetitive. I would say the one emphasis would be is to, it's called the articulation agreements, but basically what it is, is it's the agreement that we have with our partners in whether it be the community college or the automotive. So it all basically is to support. Let me just go through a few of them. An agreement between BCTC and BCTC, continue education for plumbing apprenticeship. You have agreements with Northampton Community College for automotive, Penn State Berks for biotics, chemical principles, criminal justice, early childhood. So basically, it was just, it was making these agreements with our fellow partners in education through the BCTC. Some basic housekeeping type reorganization as far as position descriptions, you know, stuff like that. Our next meeting, and again, if you guys want to see all these, I can forward you the exact minute briefings for you to look at. But the next regular meeting will be actually at the Leesport. That'll be on September 28th. There was one item in transportation that we're actually going to talk more in length at our voting meeting. Ms. Torsia, do you want to say any little teaser with that?
Okay.
Okay, that was something that's been, we've been discussing for a while with the BCTC. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Hemingway. Yes, the Berks Career and Technology Center has been looking at changing transportation and returning the responsibility back onto the school districts because it has been losing, the Career Center has been losing money in providing that transportation to the local school districts. So what they're proposing is for the start of the 23-24 school year, that all school districts would be responsible in working with their, if school districts still have their own transportation within, under their school district or who you contract with. So for us, right now, Quigley Bus Company transports our students to the BCTC and back, but we pay the Career Center for that transportation cost. So the only change for Boyer Town next year will be that Quigley Bus will charge us directly for the Career Center run. There will be a resolution that the Career Center is proposing. I did include that for you in the newsletter this past week, and it'll be there as well this week, and then we'll be looking to vote on that resolution. It'll be a formality with regards to what the Career Center is looking to do, propose.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Okay, we're going to continue. Yes, sir? Yeah, Mr. Zalata.
I just wanted to bring up a little bit what Lisa said. We happen to be lucky right now with our state representative that handles this area as far as funding. There are, she, Mr. Brophy and I went and met with her, and she gave us some areas that we could get funding, especially for our expenses that are coming up for new roofs and stuff like that. So I'm meeting, I sent her the information yesterday, I'll be seeing her tomorrow night. She has three bills sitting on the floor to be brought to the floor to change charter school policy. The only way the bill can be brought up is the leader of the House has to pass it. So it's becoming political. Hopefully, this gentleman is, he's retiring this year, so a lot of this stuff will be brought forward. The person that's running for Tracy's position next year is a previous school board president, and she's very well known, I mean, she's familiar with the problems we have with the charter school and the funding. And Tracy is running for Senate then, so she'll be able to bring that information to the floor and support us. But she's, she literally stays in touch with me and we had a very good meeting, Mr. Brophy and I, with her personally. And if any of, anybody in our group here on the board have any questions on that kind of stuff, please give them to me and I can gladly, Tracy's very open. She's very easy to get in, to see unless naturally if they're in Harrisburg. But right now, I know it's a, but she has totally went in and totally dug into some of this other stuff where there are funds available for school districts. Like, didn't realize that they'll help support and approve schools, you know, funding of buildings and stuff like that. So, yeah, so basically, like I said, we just need to stay on top of our reps, representatives, not our reps, but our representatives and senators. And I'm sure there's money in Washington DC, but as usual, that just, all of a sudden it's there and it's not. But what we have right now is that we do have a lot of support with our representatives right now. So if you do have any issues, let us know.
I'm sorry. I appreciate that, and I'm really glad to know that you guys are advocating. It's awesome. And it's, you know, the grant money and stuff, it's amazing and it's, I'd love to see it come here. So no complaints there. But I just wanted to clarify, when I'm talking about funding, because I don't think, I think I just said funding, and I'm talking about basic ed funding and special ed funding, like the big pot. So we need to just keep pushing for those big increases like we got this year to bring us back up to, you know, the levels that we were a decade ago. Yeah.
We're trying to find a path to all those funds that are sitting there. So there's also, and I agree with you, Lisa, there's a ton of different monies that's just sitting there. So it's just a matter of having the help of our representatives to show us that path and go there. That money's already been delegated, it's sitting there. It's like, we talked about this before, there's what, almost $4 billion sitting in there from COVID and that hasn't been used. And previous legislators said, well, we're going to save that, you know, to help balance the budget next year. So no, that's not what the money was for. It was supposed to support our education system and the businesses. So I agree with all of it, we just got to keep the pedal to the metal with these people and, you know, a little sugar goes a lot farther than vinegar, so. But if you do have, like I said, if you have ideas or things like that, I can at least bounce them off Tracy and she'll send us in the right direction.
Mr. Zalata, if you think it's helpful, since I have a different representative, I could go talk to them, but if you would want to go over that with me at some point and then, okay.
We have been in conversation with Maloney also. Yeah, we've talked several times. Thanks.
Yeah. Ms. Torsia, we already pay BCIU now, right?
BCIU or BCTC, Mr.?
BCIU. They want us to take their transport and do transportation for them?
It goes through Berks County, Berks Career and Technology Center, but we're not paying directly to the BCIU for transportation. We are, but yes, it is a contract that is through the Berks Career and Technology Center, which they contract, I believe, with Mr. Quigley or Quigley Bus to transport our students, which sounds really dumb, but it's the process that has been in place for a while, from my understanding. And what they're looking to do is to return it back to the school district, and we won't pay anyone but the transportation company directly.
Years we've been paying them, and now they want us to float the boat.
That would be correct. And if you read the letter that was in the newsletter, it will clarify more information for you.
Okay, on that note then, is it going to be less money? Because I'm sure they were getting some of that.
I'm not sure what the cost will be, but without working that through our CFO there and her, you know, working that out with our bus company, but it shouldn't cost us anymore, that's for sure, Ms. Nyman.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Let's move on. Just checking with everybody. Says nothing at this time, but for education and student services, I still want to give the opportunity, if you have any comments or, no? Anything on facilities? No concern? Oh, we have a finance presentation from Ms. D'Anicola. You are up.
Tonight, I'm going to be sharing some financial projections. There'll be five-year projections. I'm also going to review former five-year projections that were shared by former administrators. Over the past number of years, as Superintendent Torsia mentioned, in our first meeting of the school year, there has been a lot of turnover within key departments administratively. And you can kind of see in the projections, they kind of were way down and then went way back up, went back up. And I'll show how the projections compared to how the district actually performed and then share the forward outlook for the next five years. So the former five-year projections, again, they were prepared by a number of different administrators because there was a good bit of turnover within this timeframe. So in 2015, there was a projection that showed the district would go to a very, very negative fund balance of over $30 million negative. Then in 2018, a presentation was shared that showed while it would be a declining fund balance, it would still be a positive fund balance. 2019, that projection was again updated, that showed again declining fund balance, but not at the highest level that it was in 2018. 2020, it was yet another presentation by another administrator. They again projected slight decrease in fund balance, but much higher starting level of fund balance. Where the district actually performed was an ever-increasing level of fund balance. Now, from 2017-18 to 2020-21, there were a number of business decisions that impacted that. There were some furloughs, there was the closure of a school building. So all of those business decisions likely helped that, to show that increase in fund balance. So projections, I want to caution you on, they're only as good as the estimates they're prepared on, and they are ever-changing. As I share out the next five years, these projections will be constantly updated based upon newest estimates, newest known information. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of the history of what the district has, the district board has seen as far as projections and how it's kind of fluctuated over the years. But overall, from an actual standpoint, fund balance has had not a significant increase, but a steady increase between 2017-18 and 2021. The current five-year projection is based upon, again, the most current estimates of revenues and expenditures. It includes all currently known factors, including collective bargaining agreements and existing contracts. And again, this projection will be continually updated and shared with the board. The five-year projection for revenues, total revenue in our 2022-23 current year budget is $134,247,700. Then the projection for 2023-24 would be $136.1 million. 2024-25, $140.3 million. 2025-26, $144.7 million. 2026-27, $149 million. And 2027-28, $153 million. Built into this projection, the largest increase is going to be in our local revenue. Again, the advocacy that Mrs. Hogan talked about is going to be very, very important in pushing our state revenue numbers higher so we can hopefully bring our local revenue increases to a better level. Included in the local revenue is a tax increase each year, and it does project, based upon historical analysis, a bit of assessment growth. So we'll have the tax increase and then assessment growth as well. Federal revenue, you see the decline from $3 million in our 22-23 budget down to approximately $1.1 million in the remaining years. That big decrease is due to the lack of CARES funding in 23-24 through 27-28. So we'll go back down to our normalized level for our Title I and Title II programs. The revenue factors that may impact these projections are, again, the real estate assessment values. If we don't see as much growth, obviously that will impact the revenue. But if we continue to see an uptick in growth, that will positively impact the revenue. Earned income tax is always a concern. If we would have a large employer cease operations or short, you know, curtail their staffing, that would impact our earned income collections. On the other side, if we see more industry come in, more employees, that would positively impact as well. State funding, there has just been minor increases budgeted for increase in state revenue. We did see a large increase in the basic ed funding for this 22-23 year. However, I don't know that we can anticipate at this point in time that that will continue, because we do know that there will be a change in leadership at the state level. So we will have to, you know, update our projections as we see where the next administration is going to put their funds towards education. And then, again, the federal funding, the biggest decrease is the Lack of CARES Act funding. For expenditures, for '22, '23, total expenditures, $137 million. Largest of that is salaries and benefits, which is $90,874,165. Within the salaries and benefits, the current existing contracts that are in place have all been included in the projections. The salary and benefits number will be adjusted as we enter contract negotiations for our collective bargaining agreements and any other contracts that exist. So you will see, that's a key portion of the projection that you will see change. For total expenditures, we will be at '23, '24, projected at $140 million. 2024, '25, $142.9 million. 2025, '26, $145.8 million. 2026, '27, $148.8 million. And 2027, '28, $151.9 million. The major factors that will impact these projections will be our collective bargaining agreements and other contracts. Employee benefits, healthcare is a large portion of our budget, so as we've budgeted a normalized increase based upon what the trend is in the education sector, if we see our performance better than that, that will positively impact. And we will continue to look at programs from an employee benefit perspective to educate our employees, try and develop a healthier population, to catch things earlier, which in the end decreases those healthcare costs. We also will keep a close eye on mandated costs. The largest challenge for us is the cyber charter enrollment. We have seen a very positive decrease in those numbers, but we want to continue to bring more of those students back into the Boerstown community. And then, again, special education, a mandated cost that's largely out of our control. We cannot control the needs of the students that may move into our district, or the needs of our existing students, and, as you mentioned, Mrs. Hogan, there's not adequate funding for that. So if we look at the revenues and expenditures together, the potential use of fund balance in each year is shown. You will see a potential use of fund balance from our current-year budget, '22, '23, to '25, '26, but then in '26, '27, '27, '28, you're going to start to see an uptick where we're starting to build back some of that fund balance. That's a function of, as we would do continual tax increases, we're getting the increase not only on our existing tax base, but also the growth. So as you do that year over year, you start to compound that, and you can see that in the outlying years' projected fund balance. And we get to a much more equalized level of our revenues and expenditures, which is where we really want to be from a perspective of a school district. So to look at how that use of fund balance would impact our current fund balance, you will see that it has a steady decline, but then it starts to grow back up. I know this section, from 10.6 million roughly down to 2.7 million, is very concerning, but it's important to note that we can't make rash decisions in one year to correct our use of fund balance. We need to plan each year to make adjustments that will carry us through. So we will, we're projected to use fund balance at a pretty significant level, but that's what fund balance is there for. And then we'll start to tick back up to build it to a, you know, a healthier fund balance, to support our continuing operations. There will be business decisions along the way. Our goal is going to be maintain programs, but these will be the decision points we make as we start talking about new programs. There may be things we want to offer that we just financially can't. So that's going to be the tricky part of the next couple of years' budgets. If we get no relief on those mandated costs, and we don't have additional income come from the state, then we'll have to make some decisions. We want to maintain status quo, but we might not be able to add to the programs that we currently have. So, the five-year projection, not completely bright, but I can see that we'll head in the right direction if the factors all align. And I will tell you, the projection is very conservatively built, so expenses, you know, the expenses are fully budgeted for, the revenue numbers are budgeted for a conservative increase. So we will likely beat our revenue estimates. That's the five-year projection, and we will send out this presentation in the newsletter. And, again, this is something we'll continue to update and continue to share with the board as things change, and we'll inform you, you know, the key items that we think are going to change in a positive or negative direction.
Now, will you be using fund balance for the purpose of expending for reoccurring expenditures like salaries?
Yes. Now, there is also included within the expenditures, transfers to support capital reserve, transfers to support technology. That may be a decision point at the end of every year, to say, we're not going to put as much away to capital reserve for our long-term needs of our buildings. But those are the decision points that will come up on an annual basis.
This isn't necessary to you, Patty. Basically, I've been approached by two different supervisors of two different, we'll call Douglas Montgomery in New Hanover, and they've asked that they could give a presentation to us to show what, basically, the amount of houses and businesses that have been already approved, so, to help you figure on revenues and stuff like that. So, I don't know, and, again, I'm asking the question now, possibly how to do this, whether it would be in a small group or executive committee meeting, or in an open situation like this.
I'm starting to reach out to Jamie Gwen, and he would probably be for New Hanover, and I guess Pete would be with the manager. Yeah, so, it's a matter of making some phone calls, see what we can, see what we can do. Yeah, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, I attended a township meeting for a development that was, had some pretty scary numbers, a lot of concerns. Undedicated roads, we're talking about busing, undedicated roads for an entire development. You're going to have masses of kids at the entrances. It's going to be, going to be a lot of issues, and that's just one development in New Hanover. So, get out to your township meetings and let your faces be heard.
Thanks, Mr. Hemingway. Just a quick question. When our fund balance is down, like, it was like 2-point-something, I don't remember what the exact number was, but are there any impacts on us? Like, I remember, and it was a while ago, about like bond rates, does that have anything to do with fund balance? And, oh, sorry.
A proper, you know, financial forecast, along with a decreasing fund balance, is not necessarily going to impact your bond rating, because across the state, all districts are experiencing that. But if they see that the financial picture is continually addressed and business decisions are made to address that downfall in fund balance and then an increase back up, the important thing about fund balance to also recommend is, or to recognize, is that PDE has requirements that we maintain no more than 8% in unassigned fund balance, which is a very, very low number, but that's the PDE mandate. So we'll stay within that realm, but from a bond underwriting perspective, they look at much more than just that.
First of all, thank you for that. I have heard that Grandview has been sold, and it will not be Grandview anymore. So knowing that that is closing, that's probably some significant money to us, and I don't know if Copart's going in there is going to be able to meet that revenue that we were getting.
I can take a look at that, those parcels in particular, and report back to the board on what the potential could be. Okay. It's not only a tax increase, it's growth in assessment value. Growth in assessment value will bring in more dollars. So don't be afraid, don't be, I don't want you to be scared by seeing that large increase. And it's not just real estate taxes, it's earned income tax, it's delinquent tax, it's per capita tax, it is IDA fund, IDEA funding is actually included in PDE as local revenue. So there's a slight increase shown for IDA funding. It's a number of different factors that have gone into that increase in the local funding line. The tax percentage? 3%.
Ms. Danicola, thank you very much. And that'll be in our weekly report?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next, we're going to have some more discussion on Policy 707. Ms. Torsia?
Great, thank you, Mr. Hemingway. I did ask Mr. South to make sure that we have the current policy the way that it stands behind me. So I wanted to review Policy 707, because there are some inconsistencies with this, regards to this policy. And tonight, we're only going to be reviewing the policy, I'm going to be taking recommendations from the board with regards to things that I would be recommending as the administration be removed, or, and then looking for some input with respects to anything that may need to be added. This is only about the policy, this does not impact any type of fee structure. The fee structure that is out on our website right now is going to stand until we collectively work on a fee structure that we believe is fair and equitable to every entity that's utilizing our facilities. So there are quite a few organizations that do use our facilities, over 100, I believe, I included that in the newsletter, and we have over 30 nonprofits that are registered and listed, and some are paying and some aren't. So that's another work session. So for tonight, my focus is to look at this policy, because the way that it is written, it is not being enforced, it is not being put forth in the proper way, and if we want to be following policy, then we need to make sure that it's what we are enforcing. So I don't know if you were taking the time to review it, but I can, you know, go through it line by line. The purpose would be the Boerstown Area School District, facilities and grounds are designed and maintained to provide for educational programs and services on behalf of the students who are enrolled in the district. The board encourages the use of school facilities and grounds for events that support community-sponsored educational and recreational programs, and provide for community activities. The administration does not have any recommendations for changes there, but with that said, I'm not sure if the board does or not, so jot down some notes, and when we get through it, we can go back. The authority would be the board directs the use of school facility and fields. They shall be scheduled in the following priority: educational programs and school functions for the school and school district; events and activities sponsored by a school district connected group; activities in which the majority of the participants are school-aged youth; meetings of parent, guardian, staff organizations; community-sponsored activities and events to the public; the board shall establish a schedule of fees for the use of school facilities by approved groups; district facilities and grounds may not be used for any activities or event forbidden by law, administrative regulation, or policy. Again, there are no recommendations to make any changes there. Delegation of responsibility would fall to the superintendent or the designee, and we shall implement procedures for requesting, assigning a classification and granting permission for use of school facilities, and shall distribute the necessary information to individuals affected by them. An applicant for use of school facilities may be disapproved because of noncompliance with established policy and procedures by the superintendent or designee. Again, I have no recommendations to change anything under the delegation of responsibility. Guidelines, which include the application process, is that the policy authorizes the use of the district's online facility, usage request and community use calendar software program, that's SchoolDude. All requests for facility usage should be submitted by accessing the district's website. Along with a completed application, the individual or group must submit the following: payment of the specified rental fee, evidence of organizational liability insurance to limits required by district guidelines, and documentation evidencing the school district shall be held harmless by the user for any liability that arises from use of school facilities by the individual group. Under that part of the policy, the only recommended change to that is that we just state that a certificate of insurance with evidence of organizational liability insurance to limits required by district guidelines must be given to the business office. So it's really just a change of evidence of organizational liability to a certificate of insurance. Application evaluation: no application to use school facility shall be approved if the proposed activity would result in any of the following: a conflict with any school-sponsored activity; access to school facilities closed due to renovations, maintenance, cleaning, the school calendar, or board action; access to school facilities containing equipment or furnishings which would be detrimental to the operation of a district program if damaged or operated by an unqualified user; the proposed use would prevent or encumber district personnel from preparing school facilities for their primary purpose because of the nature or duration of the activity; and five, individual or community group uses school facilities in excess of five times during any calendar year for the same purpose. This limitation shall not apply to individual athletic contests for children or adults that are part of an overall athletic season schedule, and the use is approved by the board. So there is a part where we need to start to talk, because right now, we have organizations that are utilizing our facilities in excess of five times per year. We're not following our policy as it is written. The proposal from the administration was to strike that, and not to put a limited amount of time on organizations to use our facilities. Felt that that was restrictive. We understand that there are different people that are in and are using our facility weekly, sometimes two times a week. We also know that we have youth groups who are, you know, practicing, so obviously, you're going to, you know, be practicing more than one time per, or five times period for your sports season. So that's where we should probably start some discussion on that part of number five. My proposal is that you remove it completely, but I am open to conversation.
Okay, I guess my first, my question would be, is it a nonprofit group that's using it?
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if it's a nonprofit or a profit group. You're not stating that there. We will remove number five, and we will not subject any individual or community group to only utilizing the...
Raise your hands or something like that?
Sure. Raise your hands if you're in agreement for me to take that away. All right, thank you.
There waits, there waits.
Thank you. Next, under limitations, when individuals and community groups receive written permission to use school facilities under this policy, such use shall be conditioned upon strict compliance with the following: individuals shall not use, access, or enter upon any portions of the school facilities or their contents not specified in the approved request form; individuals shall refrain from any conduct or activities not specifically identified in the approved request form; when advertising or promoting activities held at school facilities, individuals and community groups shall clearly communicate that the activities are not being sponsored by the school district; and four, school equipment used in conjunction with requested facilities shall be... shall be identified when the application is submitted. Users of school equipment must accept liability for any damage to or loss of equipment that occurs while in their use, where rules so specify no equipment may be used except by a qualified operator provided by the school and paid for by the requesting individual. Under this part, I would like to add that there is no propping of doors for any reason. So, you know, we're doing a huge overhaul with the way that we are trying to secure our buildings currently. We've put cameras in all of our elementary schools. We've added additional inside and outside cameras at our middle and high school. And we have been operating our day-to-day school, our day-to-day school business with our classroom doors locked. We are going to be, we're going to be electronically linking all of our exterior doors to alarms so that we know that doors are not propped open. So, at this point, in order for me to ensure the safety and security of our buildings after our students leave, we need to make sure that anyone that's using our buildings are not propping doors open. They've got to figure out a way to bring people in and make sure that everybody that's supposed to be there is there. And then, you know, obviously, you're going to be in a section of the building and we don't have custodians that are watching people who are utilizing our facilities. We don't have security on at night because those would be additional costs. So, my minimal recommendation here is that you've got to be responsible if you're utilizing our facility and making sure that you're not propping doors open for any amount of time. Comments?
I think at this point, maybe to set up a penalty for saying basically, you know, first time you get a warning, the second time you're not allowed to use the facilities anymore?
Yeah, I'd like to see, like, what is the consequence of that? If you do leave the door open, and what's going to be the consequences? I guess my second thought was how are we assuring that they're staying in the area that they're supposed to not going, opening us up to the rest of the school? So, that they can, somebody can come in and go somewhere else in the school while they're there? It's another question.
I also would like to see a penalty for that. Not first time, second time. There's, we don't get that many chances with our children. First time they're out.
Okay, I understand that. But if it's even a basketball game or whatever that we have, when you have significant amount of people coming in, the door's going to be open, you can't... I mean, we can't even stop that, like, in the mornings when our kids come in, from having the door open when you have several hundred kids coming in at one time. So, I'm concerned how we're gonna implement that part of it. My second thing is, most of the schools have, or used to anyway, have like gates that would not let you down certain hallways. Do we still have that? I think that would be something to look at, too. If we have those gates there, we put them, we close them off so that they can't go down hallways. But implementing the penalty system when we're gonna have a problem, when you have like 100 people coming in, 100 students coming in at one time, and that door's gonna be open for a little bit. So, you have an organization that's there or, like the bell snickle. You have people going in and out. It's gonna be open at times. What are you gonna do about that? You can't just say...
So, when we are receiving students in the morning, there are people that are manning those doors. And once students are coming off the buses or coming in from walkers, those doors are secured. And any strikers that come in have to be buzzed in. So, those doors are not being propped open without having teachers, administrators, Officer Perez, depending on what building he may be in. So, during the school day, every door that is being used to receive students is being manned by an adult. They're there greeting the kids and then they are shutting the doors. So, they're not being propped open or unmanned for any amount of time. With respects to sporting events, when Mr. Palladino has basketball, volleyball, whatever may be inside, there are people that are working and the doors aren't being propped open and they shouldn't be left unlocked either. There is typically somebody that should be working a door. But those are things that we are working on as well. So, as we're saying that anybody that's utilizing our facility, you know, needs to be abiding by it, we are going to be doing the same thing with respects to our own staff and our own programs.
Okay, then maybe we need to word it that they have to man the doors and make sure that the doors are watched. I mean, but if you have a group coming in, it's gonna be held open for a while. It's inevitable.
That is watching and knows that they're coming in. But when a door wedge is put into place or the door is pushed open and there is no one there watching or checking who's coming in. And fortunately, we have cameras and I can go back and watch feed. So, I understand what's happening. And so, I do feel like it's a problem. And it's a problem that's more of a concern because there's less people around to see somebody get into a building and get to someplace where they shouldn't be. Absolutely, have somebody standing at the door, you know who's coming in. And if they're coming after the door is locked, a text or a phone call, can somebody let me in? Could easily work. No propping of doors, I think is pretty easy. I just don't, by propping, I mean not wedging something in a door. So, if it needs to be more descriptive or, you know, that you can't push it open and have it unmanned, that would be a way of stating it.
You could say maybe something along the lines, "All doors will remain closed and secured." With examples of not propping or, I don't know. I'm sure you'll think of something, but enhance it a little bit, just instead of just non-propping of the doors. Use it as an example.
This may be a little bit off-topic, but on this policy, do we restrict the utilization of our facilities to... How do you define community groups?
That's a different part of the policy, Mr. Soltanik. So, no, we're not going to address that part tonight. There are different classes that are broken down and therefore then there's a definition with respects to what a community group is and what a school organization is.
I just want to make mention, in a number of districts this week, we've had a lot of issues regarding the use of facilities. And it was primarily prompted by some outside groups who wanted to use facilities because of open fora which had been created. And those districts are currently exploring the possibility of saying, "In order to be a community group, you need to have 80 or 90% of your members to be district residents."
Does anyone see any other limitations that should be placed there with respects to me putting some kind of language with regard to propping doors?
Who's responsible for cleaning up?
Well, certainly, the group should be cleaning up afterwards. Our custodial group would come through. Typically, depending on the space that's being used, it may have been cleaned, it may have not been cleaned already. So, at some point, it would, you know, fall onto the custodians. But I would hope that any group that's using any of our facilities would be cleaning up the, any major part of the mess left behind.
Again, I'll go to consequences. So, if they leave it a mess, what's the, what's the district's stance on that?
Yeah. I think you ought to word that, "If you bring it in, you take it home." Because that way, we don't pay custodians to haul the trash out.
Some districts do charge users of the facilities for custodial services to clean up. And opposed to charge, we do?
In some circumstances, it is charged. It depends what, how big the event would be. And it depends on what the entity would also be. So, that's one of the things that we're going to need to iron out at our next work session with respect to, you know, what are we expecting our depleted custodial groups to do with respects to people that are utilizing our buildings? They're not just there. One large building only has one person right now after tonight. And we get through this part of the meeting, we go to the voting, we will be approving some more custodial workers, which is wonderful. But, you know, we're working with limited resources right now. So, it does become a burden, you know, for the school district.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I do think we do charge some of the organizations fees for the custodial staff. But I think that should be also limited. If they're cleaning up, should we be charging on that fee? Because some of the organizations I know do clean up after themselves. So...
Because you do have some small groups, there's only a few people. So, they could probably clean up on their own without a big issue. Just as long as it's clean. I mean, the big issue is it's cleaned up and as good as when they came in, whether we do it or they do it. But I think, I mean, that's the issue.
So, then moving right along to...
Don't we still wipe all the chairs, every chair down and every table down and all that? So, how are you gonna tell who's gonna do what? Because the custodians do that. So, I'm sure if somebody's renting a, say, a classroom, they're gonna wipe every chair down and every tabletop, desktop.
This is the time for us to be able to add that in and to make sure that they are complying and that they are keeping us clean.
I know, but how do you know that in advance? Is my question.
How would you know that in advance if you were using the facility?
How would you know what to charge me in advance for using the facility? You're not gonna be there to see if I wipe every chair down and every desktop down.
What do you suggest?
There should be some type of fee in there.
Perhaps a range?
Well, too, it depends what it's being used for. You're gonna have to categorize them somehow. And how many people.
Right now, we are suggesting that later on, there is an area where it says that you could be charged for cleanup. So, we can address that when we get to that area. So, under those limitations, we're, you know, talking about, you know, propping doors open and trash being, you know, removed was one of Mr. Updike's suggestions. Prohibited activities, that's pretty self-explanatory. The following activities are strictly prohibited. I'm sorry, is there...
Now, the other thing, though, we'll have to rely a little bit on our custodians, too. I mean, they have to report if it's turned into a total mess, you know, and it wasn't picked up, you know? So, again, if there is excess the other way, we should be able to, okay, this group now is on a do-not-hire list. But no, I mean, we have to rely on our custodians to let us know how the place is kept.
All right. So, under prohibited activities, part of the policy, the following activities are strictly prohibited in school facilities when individuals and community groups are granted written permission to use said school facilities. Possession, use, or distribution of illegal drugs, alcoholic beverages, possession of weapons, conduct that would alter, damage, or be injurious to any district property, equipment, or furnishings, conduct that would constitute a violation of the Pennsylvania Crimes Code or state, federal laws and regulations, gambling games of chance, lotteries, raffles, or other activities requiring a license under the local Option Small Games of Chance Act, unless such activity has been expressly authorized by the Board of Administration and use of tobacco products. And we should also probably add there, it's not just tobacco, it's vape. We've extended that in our other policies surrounding things that are not appropriate to bring to school. So, I will add, you know, that vape part as well. The security, next part, there's no recommended changes to that part of the policy under prohibited activities. With regard to security, the superintendent or designee may require the sponsoring organization to obtain adequate, it says adequate police protection and/or traffic control. We're going to remove that wordage. Our recommendation would be to remove adequate police protection and/or traffic control and just put security there for any given activity or event. Labor charges for security shall be negotiated between the organization and their personnel, which would really be a negotiation. If there's security that would be needed, it would be the set rate by the company that we currently contract with. So, when organizations have been using, renting our facilities and it's a large group, Officer Perez is typically brought in. He's given the number of people that they're anticipating in there. And then, he determines how many security guards would be needed. And then, whoever is renting the facility would be responsible for paying the rental, the fee that we have to pay with that contracted security company. It would have to be the security company that we're already vetted and utilizing. So, the only change in there is to change the, to security from what we have there as police protection and/or traffic control. Mr. Hemingway?
I think we ought to keep traffic control, just in case there's an event down the line. At least it's in the policy that, so if it did occur, the organization wouldn't be able to say it wasn't in the policy, you know, it's flipping our bill. Whether it be road blockage or cones, you know, whatever it is, it would be their responsibility to maintain that traffic flow.
Well, then, speaking of that, if it's at the high school, would the gate be open to go out to Montgomery Avenue then?
No, it most likely would not. It depends on, because it's not a sponsored school district event. So, our staff, administration have the ability to open that gate. Otherwise, that gate stays closed. And, you know, now, we would have to really look at it. If it would be that large of an event or somebody that was coming in and we knew there was a lot of traffic going on, then we certainly could stipulate that. That's not, it doesn't cost anything for us to open up the gate. But the cones stay in place until the traffic light goes into place, so there's no left turns. And then, the next part, it says minimal participants. The recreational activities sponsored by a non-school-related organization or by a community group shall have at least 10 participants excluding officials. Any recreational activities that have less than the required number of participants shall be canceled. It is the responsibility of the sponsoring group to notify the superintendent or designee with whom the arrangements for the use of the facility were made. In the event, the activity must be canceled. The recommendation from the administration is that we remove the minimal participants piece. I don't believe that that's relevant. That's my opinion, but any of you have some? And then, under violations, the school district reserves the right to remove from school district premises any individual or community group who fails to comply with the terms and conditions of this policy and established procedures. In the event an individual community group violates this policy or the terms under which permission was granted to use facilities, that individual or community group forfeits the right to submit future requests to use school property, district property unless otherwise decided by the board. So, that could be the, what you all were seeking as far as a consequence if they're not following some of the things that we're asking for with respects to doors and cleaning up. Those could be the violations. Any other feedback under that section?
I think as far, I think as far as the violations that we put in there, that's the ones that should eliminate their... the ones that should eliminate their response. If they've, go against the other policies we just talked about, you know, and we give them a warning, and then, you know, the second time they're out. So, you know, again, I, I know Ms. Deroff said she wanted one and out. I, I think, you know, sometimes people, you know, new experience may need a warning. And then if it happens again, but I wouldn't put that in this section. I just, the stuff that you just said should be automatic termination of an agreement between the school district and that group.
And then lastly, the fee schedule, use of school facilities for activities directly related to the educational program and district, district operations shall be without cost to users, except that the user may be responsible for extra custodial fees. And this does occur at times depending on what the event is, you know, and I, I'm not gonna be able to, off of the top of my head, quote which organizations within our school may have to pay. I, I wanna say, for instance, the school show. Ms. Denikola, I know that you work directly with your admin assistant who takes the reservation.
So if one of our student activity clubs would hold an event, they would pay for any additional custodial charges that were over and above a custodian's normal work schedule. Similarly, depending on the type of organization, we will charge custodial fees depending on whether or not additional custodial was needed or if it was just part of the custodian's regular schedule. The custodians do notify on the business office when they're working on an event how many hours they contributed towards it.
So we do charge when, when we need to. The board will establish the applicable fee schedule in consideration of recommendations made by the superintendent or designee, and the individual requister and/or group is responsible for any and all fees assigned through the approved facility usage. So this would be the policy, and then the next work would really be to look at what our current fee structure is and what would be the next steps to take to make sure that it's being applied evenly and equally to all organizations that are utilizing our building depending on their class. So we really need to take a good look at that. I will make sure that I get those fees out to the way that we have them right now, that they've been received. But is there any other feedback with respects to just this policy?
I just have a clarifying question. So for the fee schedule, when we're talking about, sorry, when we're talking about fees that could be charged to groups, so we could potentially be charging fees to school clubs and PTOs, like if they're doing something on a Friday night, that would be outside of the hours of the custodian? Like, how does that work? Is that guess what I'm asking you?
That would be part of the next work session to talk about that, be, with respects to when an organization is utilizing our building. And let's go with a Saturday, because typically we do have second shift custodians working within all of our buildings. So if there is an activity that's happening right after school and it's something, you know, with respects to, you know, PTOs and they're, you know, having a fun night, then, you know, certainly they wouldn't be paying to utilize the facility. But if there would be extra cleanup that would fall on the responsibility of the custodian that may make the custodian work longer hours, you, somebody's going to have to be able to pay for that. And, and my feeling is, is that it's not a budgeted amount of money that we have for that additional overtime. It may be overtime, it may, it may not be. So we have to, we're gonna have to look at what are the costs that are being incurred? So are there not times that there are organizations that are using our facilities that there aren't custodial fees charged? I'm, I'm not sure. And if it is, yeah, it's, it's not being applied consistently across. So I really want a consistent fee schedule is what I would like to work on next. If we have to open up a building on a Saturday and no one's working, somebody has to pay for, for that person to come in. So whose responsibility is that?
So when we're talking about, because I, from, it's my understanding, and I, just my understanding, I could be wrong. But it's my understanding that most of like the PTOs and those types of groups are, are utilizing Friday nights to, to, you know, to not have to bring people in on Saturdays, which, that's reasonable. So what you're saying is that if they're, what, how long, like, when does our second shift, how, what is that?
I believe our second shift comes in between two and three to 10 or 11.
So if, if that person would have to work past 11, then we could be potentially charging PTOs and, and school-based clubs for the extra time?
I would say so, only because it's not, it's not a part of our standard budget. So we're not prepared to be able to pay extra time for custodial services for all of the different organizations that would be utilizing our facilities. So if we know that we're working directly with a PTO, we know that they're going to be in there, and typically, they're not there till 10 or 11 o'clock. They're, they're usually out of there by 9 o'clock, maybe a little bit later because they are staying behind and cleaning up. But I would just say that, I think that if we know that there's a time, and, and for instance, we have organizations who are not affiliated with our school district, for instance, that come in and they're from out of state, they've used our auditoriums. And they say, we had strict rules saying that you needed to be done by, you know, 11 o'clock till, you know, all out. They're there until 12, 1 o'clock. If we don't, we're, our person can't leave until they get them out. So somebody needs to pay for that cost. Obviously, they're not affiliated with us, they're gonna pay it pretty easily. So the question comes to when we do have our own people in, but it's still costing us additional monies for that person to be on payroll, you know, be working, who should be paying for that? And that's a conversation that I think that we need to have with the board. It's not my decision only, but all we can bring forward is our, the experiences that have been.
So can we, I guess, I hear your point about, you know, PTOs would mostly be out of there by that time. Would there be impacts on, like, high school clubs, you know, because kid, older kids are up later, those kinds of things? It's what I'm interested in as well. I wanna make sure that our kids and clubs that support our, our students, organizations that are like school-based, like PTOs, or, you know, they're helping support the students in the schools, I wanna make sure that those people, those, those organizations aren't being penalized unduly. I, I understand what you're saying, but I think that there's an argument on the other side as well. So I wanna make sure that it's, you know.
And, and I personally would agree as, as the superintendent. And I do know, and, and believe me, I didn't set up this policy or fee structure. This has been in place, I think it's 2014, or this one says 2017. But, and I didn't do anything with the fee structure. But I know that there are some organizations, our own clubs, that are running bigger events, and they do need custodial coverage. So they do know that they're taking money out of whatever their student activity, you know, monies are that are raised to be, that are paying for that. Now, that's some things that, that's been in place for a long time. So that's happening with, and I don't know which, if it's student council or if it's a, I don't remember which.
It would be one of the student activity clubs.
Like, for instance, the, the Powder, Powderpuff Football. I believe that because the stadium's open and the bathrooms are open, now we're going to have to have somebody to come in to clean those, that facility. So therefore, somebody needs to, you know, be able to pay for whatever has to be done that evening. So I believe that they've been charged in the past. Don't, now, I think that's an example that I'm trying to give you. It, it's, it's, they're doing it as a, I, I, and again, I might be using a poor example. And I'm sorry, yes.
So these individual clubs do fundraising to support their own activities. In the event that we would incur, like overtime fees for custodial, that's when they would be charged. If it's just part of the regular custodian day, they're not charged. But they do the fundraising to support these activities. Under school code, a student activity club, the funds need, that are raised for that club have to go to support the students of that club. So that's, that's where they're generating the revenue from. And all of our largest student activity clubs are very successful in their fundraising efforts. So I don't know that it is causing any undue harm at this point to charge when we're incurring additional fees.
Why not we just put a, a set fee? I mean, it's part of, you know, it's a clean, I mean, you return stuff to a rental service and it has to be clean. But what I'm saying is, depending, not depending on any group, but I mean, if it's a non-school activity of students, we should have a minimal fee. And if they go past that, with the exception of, you know, would have to be more.
So we're getting ahead of ourselves. So the next committee of the whole, I will have information for you so that we can see what clubs are, you know, being charged for the use of our facilities. Give you more of that information so that we can then make decisions on that fee structure moving forward. Tonight, I just wanted to get this policy set. And like I said, the fee structure that is out there right now is going to stay in place until the board decides on something new. And once we do make a decision, then I think that we also make a decision that we would put that into place for the 23, 24 school year, so that people have ample time to get ready for any changes that might come out of that. So for right now, I'm, I'm going to make the changes. I'll bring this back the next board meeting to review the changes, and then we can put it on for first reading at the end of October. Yes, that's what I said. We're, we're, right. We're, I'm not touching the fee schedule, I'm just saying it's, it is a part of the, the policy, and we agree that there should be one. I'm just not making any changes to that fee, the fee schedule itself. Just making some of the changes in this policy the way that we discussed.
What if we put together in the policy that we would have a three-person committee? Okay? A board member, the principal of that school, an administrator, that would review each application, you know, and make the judgment call from there, instead of just?
Not it.
Not it?
I'm not it on that.
We have 235 organizations that utilize our facilities, and I, and that's just the number, that use it, not the number of times. So you, you'll, do you want me to set up an office for you then?
I just, I just think that's, the board would be stepping into the administration's, into, really into the administration's wheelhouse if they do, that they have to get that and then bring it to us for us to say, yeah, we like it. Yeah, you can sit there.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to take the, the notes that I have, I will bring back to you what I think that we all agreed on. We'll review it again briefly at the next meeting, and then again, at the October Committee of the Whole, we can then have it for our first reading, and we'll start the work on the fee structure at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torsia. All right. We are up to public comment period number one. I believe we do have some speakers, so let me read this first. On behalf of the School Board of Directors, I would like to welcome you to this meeting. We welcome your attendance and input, input from stakeholders to assist us when making recommendations and decisions related to the Boyertown Area School District. Procedures and rules for public participation are detailed in BASD Board Policy 903. This document is available on the BASD website. Participants properly registered with the Board Secretary will be recognized by the presiding officer. Public comment period number one is limited to topics on tonight's agenda. Participants must preface their comments by an announcement of their, their name. All statements, inquire, inquiries, or comments shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually, administrative team members individually, school employees, or members of the public individually. Note that we value and will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please see as outside the room of the public meeting if you have a concern about an individual staff member or student. If your public comment includes a question, Ms. Torsia or a member of her staff, we'll be in contact with you to confirm your question and provide you with information. Comments are limited to three minutes, and comment periods are limited to 30 minutes. Individuals may indicate a desire to speak a second time if there is time left in the 30-minute period. Finally, note that we do record our board and committee meetings, and we post them on YouTube with a link on our website. We request that you, if you do wish to take pictures or record the meeting yourself, you do so in a non-disruptive and discreet manner, and use those materials respectfully and responsibly. Okay. We have Barbara Hunter, I'm gonna listen to the first three, so we have Barbara Hunter, her topic 7007, Kevin Patton, also policy 707, and then Barbara Furman, 707. So you three will be in the, in the queue. So Barbara Hunter, could you come, come up, please?
There we go. Hello, my name is Barbara Hunter. I'm a resident of the Pine Forge area of Boyertown. I spoke previously about the proposed updates to the facility rental policies and fees. I was heartened by the support from several board members and by the decision to table the vote until more discussion could take place, and I come before you tonight in the middle of that discussion. As a parent of six school-aged children, all of whom have used Boyertown facilities for activities, including Optimist cheerleading and basketball and Legionette twirling, and as a former four-year PTO president in the district, I implore you to consider the financial burden that would be placed on youth and families in our community if you were to charge facility fees for youth sports and PTO events. All of these programs provide positive outlets for youth in the Boyertown community. PTOs and HSAs give prolific amounts of money back to their home schools. Boyertown administration has no problem accepting the generous gifts of playground equipment, smart boards, and library books from parent organizations, or the extensive financial aid of the Boyertown Music League in support of Boyertown's award-winning music program. Yet the administration now wants to nickel and dime these organizations to rent space to hold the very events that fund these programs and serve the families participating in the fundraisers. Please consider waiving fees for youth and parent organizations for the betterment of Boyertown. I also ask for clarification on enforcement of policies, current and future. I serve in a committee for Boyertown Legionettes headed by my friend Brooke Patton, who will be speaking tonight. We have used district facilities here for decades, and we treat them with great respect and leave facilities clean every time. We practice Wednesday and Thursday nights during the school year at Middle School West. This week, in requesting facility usage for our holiday party on a Thursday night in November in lieu of practice, we were told that our usage would be approved if we paid an hourly custodial fee of $44 per hour. Not a one-time fee to clean up afterwards for an hour, but $44 per hour. We've referenced the published documents on policy 707 on the facility uses page of the district site, and I printed them out, and we are a Class II organization, quote, "an organization within geographical boundaries of the school district whose primary purpose is the betterment for the community and providing of services to residents." This includes, but not limited to, Lions Club, Rotary Club, Kiwanis Club, Optimist, et cetera. As we provide youth services and are sponsored by and affiliated with the Boyer American Legion, we continue to qualify as a Class II. The custodial service subsection for the rules for school use specifies that there will be, quote, "a custodial charge unless the activity or event is held during a period when a custodian was previously assigned to work." West custodians regularly work past 9:00 PM on weeknights, and our activity is scheduled during their assigned work hours. Upon appeal to Mrs. Torsias, he said that these regulations do not apply to our situation, that the Legionettes will indeed need to pay $176 for a four-hour Christmas party. Since Mr. Grophy stated at the last meeting that the district does not make money on these fees and only breaks even, I can only assume that our district custodians are handsomely compensated. And the current job listing on the district website advertising a full-time custodial position for $14 an hour is a typo. Time? Thank you.
Kevin Patton?
My name is Kevin Patton, I reside in Culbertale. I stand, I stand again before the school board as a resident, taxpayer, parent, former school PTO treasurer, and current Boyertown Legionette twirling organization board member. I am speaking regarding policy 707. According to the National Center of Education Statistics, students who participate in extracurricular activities have a 15% higher classroom attendance rate than students who are not involved. As a result, these students are more likely to have a higher GPA. As a result, these students are more likely to have a higher GPA, which also has a direct connection to higher education opportunities. The social component of extracurricular activities instills a sense of community, responsibility, and involvement. In a study conducted by the Mayo Clinic, it was found that children who were engaged in extracurricular activities were significantly less likely to engage in recreational screen-based activities. In contrast, long screen time was associated with lower levels of satisfaction with life and optimism, which resulted in high levels of anxiety and depression symptoms. Shorter recreation was associated with favorable mental health and well-being. With that being said, when you look at policy 707 and the fee schedule and grouping that is be created by the board, you need to keep all of this and all of the children that this will impact in mind. During the August 9th meeting, it was discussed that there had been several organizations that have utilized the Boyertown School properties for years, even decades, and provided many children with activities that are not offered by the district. I think that that process needs to be divided by these groups. From truly nonprofit and business, for example, the Boyertown Legionettes organization is a nonprofit organization as is registered as such. Most of the participants within the group reside within the school district and therefore school taxes are being paid by these families. Organization has a zero-turnaway policy and is funded by donations and funds raised. Simply put, we have children in our organization that would be involved in nothing if it wasn't for this. And as long as my wife and I are involved with the organization, we will never return any child's simply away because of money. When discussing this matter tonight, please keep in mind all the good things that come from these organizations. Teamwork, social skills, self-discipline, sportsmanship, and listening are just a few. Now, as a former PTO treasurer and still very involved in the PTO, the thought that the district wants to charge us anything to utilize the property completely infuriates me. With no disrespect to some of the board members sitting in front of me tonight, but I have never seen any of you at any PTO-sponsored activity and/or fundraiser for Boyertown Elementary School. This summer, we wrote a check for $6,500 to have playground equipment fixed after it was unusable for an entire school year. The previous year during COVID, we put over $15,000 into the staff lounge for the teachers and in years previous to that, we wrote a check in the amount of $20,000, which was used to purchase necessary things throughout the school. These totals do not include the thousands of dollars that we have utilized for the teachers to purchase supplies that they needed for their classrooms and all of the money that was used for activities for the kids. All of this money was made possible because of countless hours of volunteers, something that would be considered when you were thinking of charging the PTOs for anything. With all of this being said, I ask the board to seriously consider the negative consequences that implementing a fee schedule would have to the groups that I have spoken about tonight. Thank you.
Barbara Furman?
I had asked to speak, not that I don't want to speak earlier, but mine was, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Brooke Patton? Mrs. Stapleton, did you, you want to do one or two, correct?
Me?
Yes.
I had spoken to Mrs. Torshia and said I would like to do, I wanted to do one.
Okay, so you'd be-
Possibly two, but I will confirm that.
Okay, so you would be up after Mrs., you'd be up after Mrs. Patton?
Okay, thank you. Okay.
My name is Brooke Patton and I am the organization director of the Boyertown Legionette Twirlers. I've been a part of this organization since my oldest child was five. She is now currently 19. The Legionettes have been a staple to the Boyertown area since 1970 and since day one have utilized the facilities of the Boyertown School District. In 2014, members of the organization and our main sponsors, the American Legion Post 471, you should know who they are. Their name is all over the baseball field at the high school. Stood in front of the board for the same exact reason I am standing here today. Back on August 9th, it was on the agenda to change the usage facility policy so that the organization, such as the one I represent, would then be charged to use the district's facilities. That item was taken off the agenda and it was stated by the administration that a public open meeting would be scheduled later and that our organization would be invited back and that would get, it would get discussed further. That did not happen and so here I am again. The current policy for facility usage in rental states as follows policy 707. Class II will not pay a rental fee unless the sponsoring organization charges a fee to participants or if an admission fee is levied. We fall under Class II as a nonprofit school-connected organization. We strive to keep costs low because we have not had to pay for practice space. We believe in a policy where no child is turned away and we have several students on a full or partial scholarship, which means that the organization pays for everything they need to participate in our event. Can you tell me of a sport within this school district that does that or within the surrounding organization's area? Our organization is run strictly by volunteers. If you pass the changing of this policy and move us to a category that would force us to pay rental fees, we would be subject to charge outrageous amounts that our parents simply cannot afford. We rely solely on donations from our parents and outside community. We use church facilities when the school is not available, free of charge, but the ceilings are not high enough to practice properly. We end a season with enough funds to start the next one. Each year, we hold an annual holiday party which consists of a theme and supply and we supply all the decorations, games, and prizes, not only for our students but their siblings as well. We ask parents to donate food items and it's a great way to end our season. This year, for the first time ever, we were told we were being charged $44 an hour to have a custodian on duty. We've requested to have the cafe from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., which allows us for setup, party time, and cleanup. It would cost us $176, which is more than the party itself. For what? To pay a custodian who is already on duty to take out trash bags and sweep a floor, both which are his normal duties. We do all of the setup, all of the cleanup, and there is no need for him to even enter the room until the minute we are ready to walk out the door. Again, according to your policy for custodial fees, Class II, there will be a custodial charge unless the activity or event is held during, unless the activity or event is held during a period where a custodian is previously assigned to work. Seems like the district only cares about money and a district that believes in no place for hate, who's being the bully now? Thank you.
Ms. Stapleton, you're up. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Debbie Stapleton. I live in Culbordale Township. I'm here to address the board regarding the proposed fee schedule changes involved with renting any of the facilities. I'm not here to be confrontational, but I'm here asking you to open your minds and just listen to what I have to say. I'm a dance studio owner in this district and have been one for 30-plus years. I have done almost all of my recitals at the Boyertown Senior High, the only time leaving when it was under construction. I love being there. The dancers in my studio are my kids and I want the best for my kids. Having the best is the auditorium at BASH. I'm not, I am addressing this topic not only for myself, but every dance studio, organization, or person who wants to rent any district facility. I am being crucified on social media by the people who are being positive. Yet here I am, still fighting. I won't give up. Your proposed rate increase would jack my fees up 50% over what I paid last year. That's astronomical. I believe the quoted rate of inflation is 8%, but 50%? I'm holding steady on my rates just so I don't have to turn anyone away. As a district-paying tax resident and a district business who pays taxes to this school district, is it fair to me that I pay the same rate as someone outside the district when 98% of my dancers are district residents as well? In your new fee schedule, which I know has been put on hold, there is a wording of any time under the classification listings. Does this mean I can now come in any time of the year and request a facility rental or am I still limited to the last day of school? If you increase rates by the exorbitant amount that you're putting out there, won't you be driving away any other influx of income? I'm asking you to please reconsider the reposed rates and make the rentals more affordable for anyone. I should be paying for your facility. That is not an issue with me. I just want to be treated fairly. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my concerns.
Looking for approval of the August 23rd, 2022 Board of School Directors Meeting Minutes.
Hogan motions.
Can I have a first from Mr. Zawada and a second from Mrs. Hogan? Any questions, comments? So again, that was a first from Mr. Zawada and a second from Mrs. Hogan. If we could go to a vote, please.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelllo?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next would be our superintendent's consent agenda. Ms. Torshia?
All right. Tonight, we will be looking for the School Board of, the Board of School Directors to approve the consent agenda as presented. The items include the bid awards for spring 2023, athletics, resolution of abandonment of employment for employee number 5549, and resolution of abandonment of employment for employee number 5738. I'm looking for a motion.
Hogan motions.
I'm in second.
I had a first from Ms. Hogan, a second from Ms. Nyman. Go right to a vote.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelllo?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I have under the superintendent's itemized agenda for the Board of School Directors to approve the capital projects for the 22-23 school year.
Hogan motions.
Okay, I have a first from Ms. Hogan, a second from Mr. Panarelllo. Questions, comments? Ms. Torshia, we can go to a vote.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelllo?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'll be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda items as presented.
Hogan motions.
I'm in second.
Okay, I have a first from Ms. Hogan, a second from Ms. Nyman. Questions, comments? Ms. Nyman?
Just concerned a little bit because I saw some food service workers and their different rates. Is that the amount of time they're here or, like, some of them are 13, 25, some are 14?
That is correct. Food service developed the pay rates in accordance with length of time that they have been here. Yep.
Ms. Dieroff and then Mr. Zawada.
On the personnel agenda, if we could have the dollars and cents for some of the positions, I'd appreciate it.
I have a question, and this is due to lack of knowledge. The leave of absences, can somebody explain because it's a significant amount of time that some of these are put in?
There would be a leave of absence allowable for FMLA purposes. There's also allowable leave within the collective bargaining agreement and there is a policy out there that allows for uncompensated leave. So the bulk of the leaves you're seeing are all uncompensated unless they qualify to use any accrued sick time.
Go to a vote.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelllo?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, it brings us to comment period number two. I do have a few signed up. Let me read this again. On behalf of-
Yeah, we had something else on here for, was this called the bid awards?
On behalf of the Board of School Directors, I would like to welcome you to this meeting. We welcome your attendance and input from stakeholders to assist us with making recommendations and decisions related to the Boyertown Area School District. The procedures and rules for public participation are detailed in BASD Board Policy 903. Document is available on the BASD website. Participants properly registered with the Board Secretary will be recognized by the presiding officer. Public comment period number two is for those persons wishing to discuss an item not appearing on the evening's agenda. Participants may preface their comments by an announcement of their name. All statements, inquiries, or comments shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually, administrative team members individually, school employees, or members of the public individually. Note that we value and will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please see us outside the room of a public meeting if you have a concern about an individual, staff, member, or student. If your public comment includes a question, Ms. Torshia or a member of her staff will be in contact with you to confirm your question and provide you with information. Comments are limited to three minutes and comment periods are limited to 30 minutes. Finally, note that we do record our board and committee meetings and we post them on YouTube with a link on our website. We request that if you do wish to take pictures or record the meeting yourself, you do so in a non-disruptive and discreet manner and use those materials respectfully and responsibly. Thank you. First, we'll have Nicole Zelkzow.
So I just want to address two things I heard at the meeting tonight. One, in regards to the busing. Really glad that we figured out what went wrong and were able to move forward to correct it and then move forward so it doesn't happen again. However, I think something was missed here and that was the communication to the parents in regards to what happened with busing or that the lack of communication. I don't have a kid in the school. I don't work for the district. I'm just a taxpayer and I knew very early on that there was an issue. So the fact that parents weren't provided with information, even though you might not have been able to pinpoint what it was, there was parents that went without responses for days, unanswered emails, being hung up on. Those kind of things are unacceptable and we shouldn't be doing that to our parents. They were already going through enough with trying to figure out how to get their kids to and from school to have that added stress. The second thing I want to address that was also talked about tonight at the meeting was the, or is the, sorry, I lost my train of thought, is the- I'm sorry, I totally forgot what I wanted to talk about now that a lot has happened tonight. Oh, now I remember, was the five-year projection. I'm glad we finally got one. But for the love of squirrels, why was that not presented prior to our budget? I mean, honestly, that would have been really good information for this board to have prior to the budget to make a decision in regards to the- to the budget to make a decision in regards to where they wanted to go. Why wasn't it presented before the budget? I can't figure it out. I don't know, but I would like to know why that information was not provided to the board prior to the budget. Thank you.
Mr. Amy.
Red is on, got it. Okay, it's different than the one we have up at the Ed Center. Thanks. John, Amy, New Hanover Township, just a couple of questions. Want to echo the call for transparency. This fee schedule, I'm sure that a lot of the organizations understand that schools have costs, and we would probably have been all happy to work with you to discuss good and proper fee structures. Felt like something that was just thrown at us as opposed to something where you actually could have reached out and involved, potentially involved some of the, some of your partners in helping you raise money for your curricular and non-curricular programs here at the school. Would have been, would have appreciated a little bit more transparency with that. Want to echo the same thing when it regards to transparency. Glad to see the five-year projection, wished I would have seen it from the budget. You know I'm going to ask this, when it gets presented to the public, I'd love to see all the assumptions, and if I don't see the assumptions listed there in to the level of detail that I think you would be able to provide, well, you know what I'm going to do, so I'm going to ask for it via right-to-know requests, so I'm hoping that you'll be proactive, save yourselves the expense and the time. And for the sake of transparency, community, when you put those types of projections out, you put the details and assumptions that went into it, and also, again, some concept of how you expect these five-year projections will impact educational offerings at Boyertown. And like I said, if you don't do it, you know I'm going to ask for it, so save yourself some time. Last thing, I have heard some rumors that, and I'd like a little bit of clarity on this, and I can have an email from Mrs. Torsha or somebody offline, because I've checked the policies on this and I'm not understanding, seems to be in a new policy in place that when there's fundraisers that are being offered by either in-school programs or potentially sponsored by partner programs like the one that I represent, the Music League, you're starting to ask for forms to be filled out to get approval by the board, by the building super, or building principal before those fundraisers are allowed to go. And also, some opportunities like Amazon Wishlets are being refused because they weren't approved beforehand. All I see in the policy where you have to ask the board principal for any type of approval is if they're actually utilizing the students to fundraise, and that's a protection for the students so they don't feel like as part of a captive audience, they might feel pressured to fundraise when they don't want to. Like a little clarity on that. We're trying to raise money to help the schools. I'm happy to fill out any forms and make sure we're abiding by any policies that we could do, but to me, it just feels like another roadblock that's being put in, and I'm not quite clear as why that's happening, so I'm happy to take that offline in an email from somebody if they could explain why that's going on. Thank you.
Jessica Hartenstein.
Hello, my name is Jessica Hartenstein, and I live in Boyertown. I am the president and a board member for the PTO of Boyertown Elementary School for the past four years. I have been active in the board since my daughter has stepped in the elementary school and kindergarten, and she's now in fifth grade. This organization is a volunteer-run organization. The very idea that we should have to pay any money for the use of the facilities is ridiculous, and frankly, it's a slap in the face. Every single penny that we raise throughout our school year goes directly back to Boyertown Elementary, every single penny. If you charge fees, you are stealing money from our students, faculty, and school community. The elementary schools need the funds for themselves. We don't want to refuse any needs that are requested. If these fees are assessed, that will happen. Just one example, last year, we fundraised for brand-new slides, slides that cost $14,000. Last year, sorry, I lost my spot, not including the decks that needed to be addressed. These slides should have been paid for by the district. We are happy to do it because we knew there was a slim chance the district would supply the funds. The building is full of needs. The library carpet hasn't been changed since the school was built some 50 years ago. The courtyards need to be refreshed, and we just redid the teachers' lounge, which was in dire need, and I cannot express to you how much that meant to those teachers and how much it lived, filled support and they build morale. There are needs in that building that I see day in and day out as I walk through those halls, and I work in that school, so I see it, and it makes me even more passionate. While our elementary schools have needs, the high school looks gorgeous. I graduated from Boyertown, and when I go into that school, it is unrecognizable in most areas. Where are the funds for the elementary schools? Why does the high school get funds while our school is left to raise money for slides and other needs? I am constantly told by our school and our parents that things have not changed since they left the school some 20 years ago or more. It's exactly the same, they say to me repeatedly. Doesn't that speak volumes? We aren't asked for brand-new gyms, snack bars, halls, et cetera, we are asking for use of a building. At the last board meeting, we are stated that there were costs to cover these fees. What costs? The PTO says pays for every single item that we use for events. If we don't pay for it, it's donated by the families at BES. We clean up after each event. Our events never use any kind of electricity other than lights, maybe a microphone. That's about it. The custodians are working anyway when we have our events 99% of the time. We don't even use them half the time, other than to get us tables and take out some trash bags. There's even a parking lot and an HVAC fee. These events are needed for socialization for our students and families, especially after the limitations of the last two and a half years due to COVID. It seems to me these fees are being used to raise funds for the district instead of covering incurred costs. We are part of the district and we support this school. Charging the PTO for any school use is ludicrous. Also, we do have gates at BES, so there is a way to lock it off, and if you think we're going to be able to monitor...
If you weren't finished, continue. I didn't see the time on the back.
There's no way that we can monitor all of our students, our families coming into that building, and leaving that door open is honestly the only way we're going to be able to do that. Not only for the fact, as I noticed you said about the Bel Schnickle, I don't understand how you think that's going to happen when we have very, very low support as it is. It's literally me, three other board members, and maybe one or two other parents that help with this board, so please take that into consideration. If these fees are assessed, our support will go even lower. Thank you for your time.
Barb, you're up.
Hello, Barb Furman, New Hanover Township. Hello. I am a proud public educator, and my heart has been heavy for the last two-plus years. We are the land of the free and the home of the brave, and on this 21st anniversary of 9/11, I reflect on the patriotism and bravery throughout this country, love of country and First Amendment rights. What does that look like today? Here in Boyertown, it looks like thousands of people voting to preserve parental rights. It looks like parents standing up for their right to attend and participate in public discourse as taxpayers and citizens and not be demonized. For the greater part of a year, parents and taxpayers have been discouraged from participation because the meeting location was limited by space. Certainly, tonight's venue is much appreciated. However, rules regarding participation have been conspicuously driven by a policy of silencing, whether implicit or complicit. Our expectation was that our elected officials would be guided by we, the people, not federal and state bureaucracy, and at the very least, that our voices would be encouraged as parents and citizens. Encouraging public participation is integral to our community's success. As an educator, I know that children learn best in an atmosphere where their teachers and staff fearlessly lead and empower them to think critically. Since 2020, children's health and safety has taken a backseat to mandates with the carrot and stick of federal money. Don't be deceived. Mandates are not laws. Masking children has yet to be debated and assessed as to benefits and risks. Test scores and learning development have been greatly negatively impacted by the local response to COVID, and with the portrait of a graduate being proposed, CRT equals diversity, equity, inclusion; DEI equals social emotional learning. I am bringing this to your attention as board members so that you will do the research for yourselves. Thank you.
That brings us to board comments. Oh, of course. Yeah, no, no.
Debbie Stapleton, I still live in Colebrookdale Township. Two board members raised, and I know the rules, I'm not allowed to point them out, so raised two questions that, from applying to the school district, I can answer your question, maybe. When I decide that I want to rent the Boyertown Senior High, I go online, go onto SchoolDude Messenger, and I submit my application to the business department. It then filters its way through the business department, and it's either approved or denied. From there, the business department forwards it to the school where I want to rent, which is the senior high, and it goes to the principal. When it hits the principal's desk, it is up to the principal to approve the use of their facility for what I want to do with it. Every time it is advanced to the next person, I receive an email so that I know that it has been activated and where the situation sits at all times. So that's how you rent a facility. When I rent it and when I'm done, I receive an invoice in the mail with everything that's itemized telling me how much I owe. I do a dress rehearsal one night, and I do a recital presentation the next day. My dress rehearsal was on a Friday from 5:00 until about 9:00. There was a custodian that was scheduled to be on there, and I was not charged for the custodian to work my event. My recital was the next day in the afternoon from roughly 2:00 to 5:30. There was not a custodian scheduled. They put up a sign-up sheet in the custodian department, and someone will sign up to work that event. Because that is overtime, I am charged a higher rate at which my custodian fees come in at, and I should be because that is the day that I want to do it. I want to do it on a Saturday. Those are all options that were always spelled out for me, and I knew going into it what I was going to pay. So that's how you get a little bit more approval, that you don't have to have an office, submit it for the board directors to approve, board of directors to approve everything, and that's how you know when you're paying overtime and when you're paying regular time or when you're not paying. Okay? I hope it's helped somebody enlighten a little bit. I would help anyone. If you ever have any questions, you can find my number, if you can find it. I'll help you, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, we want to move on to board comments. John, Ms. Nyman?
Sure, I'm getting used to going first. Several items here. I'm still looking and would love to have that presentation. I know it's not a comprehensive annual report, but that's what I'm still calling it.
The auditors will be coming to one, or will be presenting at one of the October meetings. They are also beginning their year-end 2022 audit in October.
Okay, well, I'd still like to have that presentation because I think that's part of what we pay them for. Okay. I'd like to have a curriculum meeting scheduled. I'm still looking for that. I think there's, I think everybody's been looking for that. Another request I'm going to do is I would love to request for this board, all nine members of us, to go through Boyertown Elementary School, because this is not the first time I've heard there's issues there. I've heard it several times before. I've said it before that there's a lot there that needs to be done before something happens to that school, so I'm asking now, and maybe I need a second and we need to vote on it, but I'm asking to have this board go into that building and do a thorough look at it. And then I'm going to ask for one more item. I'm looking for copies of our legal fees for the last six months. I would like to have the board get that information, I'd like to get that information. And other than that, 9/11, and we have a lot to be thankful for, for this country. I do thank the PTOs for, for all that they do for our students, and I guess that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Updugrove? Ms. Hogan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hemingway. First, I wanted to thank Mrs. Petry and the students who came out. They're really awesome. I was, it's really, really, really great to be back in a school building, and I know it's late, but it's great to get to see the kids, and it just makes me happy, so thank you. And then I wanted, oh, so if, is there a process to see the legal fees? How does that work if someone wanted to see them? Is there like a, I don't know.
Haven't been asked for the legal fees, so it would, you know, certainly be something that you would be privileged to, so it's a matter of working with Ms. Nicola in her office and gathering them. All-inclusive legal fees would not just be our solicitor's office, so it would be for everything that we're doing that... Excuse me? So they're extensive. They would also cover special education costs, they would cover anything that's being done with, with reference to right-to-know requests. It would also be anything personnel-related, so we'd have to, you know, dissect what it is and be able to just get a bottom, you know, line number.
How long do you think that would take?
I'm not sure. Yeah, we would have to look.
Are we done that conversation, or I'm not sure? Okay, no, it's okay, I just wasn't sure if we were done.
Bye, Lisa.
Thank you. Yeah, so, and then I just wanted to take a moment and recognize, you know, the passing of 9/11. It's a somber memory every year, and I, and I always like to take a moment to just remember and thank all those who serve, first responders, military. It's just a reminder of how much some people are willing to give, so I appreciate it. Thank you, that's all.
Scott.
Yes, thank you. I do appreciate the venue tonight. It was nice being here, seeing the kids in their element, and, and really, what they presented tonight was very good as well. It was, it was very well thought out. I'm also appreciative to the parents that came out tonight and gave their input, especially for the facilities, because I appreciated hearing all the comments and getting to know what you're met with and what, you know, you, you need. Also, I am, I did a committee meeting, maybe it was about a month ago, I did talk about having committees again, and I do have some thoughts on that. I don't want to take time here, but Mr. Brophy, I would like to get together with you and just give you my thoughts on it. I know that none of us want to spend every night or even three nights or two nights because we have a life and we have other things we're involved with, with committees, so I had some ideas, but I would like to see a curriculum committee meeting scheduled though, however, as well, if we could do that. But I would like to see a curriculum committee meeting scheduled, however, as well, if we could do that. So, thank you.
The only thing with curriculum committees, they would still, no matter which way they go, they had to be public meetings, part of these meetings. We can't have a special, non-public meeting on the curriculum issues. So it's a little bit harder to set that up, and I would have to defer to both Mr. Panarello and Mr. Zawada as to how that would go.
I understand that, and I have a thought on that. I realize it has to be public. It should be public, so I don't have a problem with that.
Ms. Diroff?
Because of the hour, I'm going to let my comments go tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Zawada?
I just want to say tonight was worthwhile. I know it's late for everybody, but we got a lot of good information and working across, you know, with everybody, it was great, and I think everything was well-presented. And I appreciate this, our neighbors coming out tonight and telling us, you know, giving us some more thought. I also want to thank, you know, pray to God for nine eleven. I do know a couple of people that lost their lives there. And luckily, my wife's train was canceled or was running late, or she might have been one of them too. So again, we had a good time. I thank the administration and all their knowledge.
I have no comment, but Mr. Brophy, I'll save you for last.
Yeah, what we're moving to tonight, which is what we did, is making these meetings more working meeting. So what you'll see is they won't be jam-packed with a bunch of different subjects because when you do that, you don't get anything done. So there'll be limited topics, but that'll allow for more discussion on those limited topics. So you won't see the jam-packed, you know, jam-packed committee of the whole meeting agendas that you've seen in the past.
Okay, there's upcoming meeting dates.
Our next school board meeting will be at seven o'clock on September twenty-seventh. That will be at the Ed Center. October eleventh, the committee of the whole meeting at seven o'clock will be at Culbordale Elementary School. And October twenty-fifth will be the school board meeting again back at the Ed Center.
Okay, thank you Gilbertsville Elementary School. Ms. Petrie, thank you. With that, I'm looking for a motion-
Meeting to adjourn.
To adjourn. I have a first from Mr. Panarello, a second from Mr. Zawada. Meeting adjourned.